Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, February 14th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is opening comments. Richie?
I'm all set.
Penzo?
I just wanted to let everybody know that this past Saturday, we had the MVP workshop. And basically, what the MVP is, is for municipalities who wish to prepare for climate change impacts, build community resilience, and receive designation from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. This is where Tony used to work, actually, I believe. Right, Tony?
Yes.
Okay. And as a climate change municipal vulnerability preparedness program municipality, designation will be given to municipalities who compete, complete a community resilience building workshop process to prepare for that impact of climate change and fulfill associated deliverable required to maintain designated status. This allows us to get grants for climate change and resilience to climate change. It was really a wonderful time. Kyle was there, Tony was there, I was there. There was a bunch of us, the whole committee was there, stakeholders that were involved, you know, from around town. And we discussed what, how to be resilient. Fire chief was there, police chief was, no, he wasn't, Bobby didn't, wasn't able to come. But it turned out to be a very, very, very informative and good, good meeting. And we have a plan, we're coming up with a good plan to, you know, try to work with the climate change and so forth and get grants to help us with it. So it was a good, good time, good, good day.
And last year, you received a $15,000 grant, right?
Yeah, we got the, we got the grant to start the committee, that's right.
If I may, a lot of people had followed up after Saturday, asking what that was about. So there, there was the surveys that helped inform a lot of the conversations that happened at that meeting on Saturday. But the report will eventually be released and there'll be a listening session, a public meeting here in the town hall where folks can come and hear about the report and the process. So they haven't set a date for that yet, but I encourage folks to, to come up and, and for that, for that meeting, once it gets announced, to hear about what the report says and the vulnerabilities that are identified and maybe, it might have next steps, you know, what grants we might go to, go for first.
Good, good. Richie had just asked and approved the February 7th minutes. They're not ready yet, correct?
Are they in your book? No.
No, we'll do that next time. Yeah, good point. Our citizens forum? Anybody wish? Well, they were here first.
Johnman, Bill Mahoney, 179 Willow Road. In the past month, actually, back in December, the Northeastern has sent out some literature to the town. And it was concerning, one of the issues was concerning the lobster hatchery. And they, and there was a statement in this that stated that we, the lobster men were in collaboration. Several other fishermen have talked to me about this and, and people have talked to them in the past month, asking that question. And we, a group of us, got together to write a letter to, to have it read tonight, which I'm gonna, and I'm gonna hand it to you. So I'd like to read this right now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. To the Board of Selectmen. Gentlemen, just over a year ago, several citizens of Nahat discovered evidence that Northeastern University was planning a huge expansion at East Point. Initially, we learned that Northeastern's plans called for the construction of a new 90,000 square foot facility and a seawater intake system, which would use five times the capacity of the present system for the facilities at East Point users. Most of Nahat's citizens were shocked by the size and scope of the project. We were most offended, many were most offended by the total lack of transparency on the part of Northeastern University administrators in divulging their plans. Seventeen hundred Nahatis voiced their concerns about this project by signing a petition that was delivered to the president of Northeastern University during the spring of 2018. Many residents have since placed signs predominantly on their, prominently on their properties and have dedicated countless hours in financial support to combat further development at East Point. When it became clear to the citizens of Nahat would not accept this expansion without a fight, administrators at Northeastern began publishing their own propaganda in February 218. As you are probably aware, this misinformation campaign has been persistent. Their five mailings to date have distorted the facts and have attempted to bribe the citizens of this town with a bill of goods in the hope that we will be, be placated into submission. Their latest mail that landed, this was the one in December, landed in my mailbox only a few days prior to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, where Northeastern revealed their three revised plans. That was the December 11th meeting. This glossy pamphlet completely fabricated the views of the Nahat lobstermen by claiming that we are actively collaborating with Northeastern and its expansion plans for working, by working to develop a lobster hatchery. Aside the fact that this is fabrication, this publication neglected to mention that the current water intake system has destroyed the lava of millions of lobsters and finfish over the decades that it's been in operation, as Josh Trussell was reluctantly forced to admit at the, at the December meeting. We, the lobstermen of Nahat, cannot be bought with the promise of a lobster hatchery to be developed in conjunction with the planned expansion. As one of the oldest and most significant lobster fishing fleets left in the Commonwealth, we have closely observed how Northeastern University interacts with its environment, especially in Burlington and in Roxbury. We are not only citizens of this town, but as lobstermen, whose livelihoods intimately tied to the waters off East Point, we wish to make it crystal clear that we in no way support any expansion at East Point. Furthermore, we, we believe that the proposed development is clearly prohibited by Nahat's existing zoning bylaws. A natural resource designation was established in 91, 1991, with the purpose of protecting wildlife habitat and to maintain Nahat's limited open space for all its residents. The bylaw clearly states that this is protected land and cannot be developed for any other purpose. Additionally, Massachusetts case law has established a clear precedent, which shows that the Dover Amendment does not supersede our natural resource zoning. We call on you gentlemen, selectmen, as our elective town leadership, to support the will of the majority of Nahat's citizens by stopping Northeastern University's expansion, and it's signed by 17 of the guys who fish in Nahat. So thank you so much.
Is this your only copy, Bill? So we'll make copies of this. So you guys don't support the hatchery?
Yeah.
You don't?
We don't, we don't support expansion.
No, what about, you don't support the hatchery either?
If you read the intricacies of hatcheries, because we tried all along the way, they're not successful.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. I needed, I wanted to clarify that.
You know, you're negotiating, you guys say you're not, I hope that, well, we got this by, you know, that's gonna make a lot of nice negotiations. So as far as a bunch of us guys, you know, we know how to be not, we know how to get, you know, the very lobsters, you know, out there in their files. And yes, they have, you know, they even said that they buy lobsters or something like that, that they're gonna make out, I don't know if you read the fine print.
Yeah, I, no, I read what they, I read.
So, you know, they're just trying to buy us off.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's on board with that, that's all. I appreciate this, Bill. Tell me what you want to do, because...
All the guys writing with, with me, and they're, they're gonna sign a similar one with their names.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, as, as far as copies, we can make copies for this and then you can come back and get the original? Or do you want us to keep the original?
I can do it right after the meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hawks on Nahat Road, but I'm here today as the Director of Nahat Public Library. As you may or may not know, we have a memory cafe that meets on the second Thursday of every month now. It is for people that have cognitive decline, dementia, Alzheimer's, other similar cognitive disorders, and their caregivers, who are very often their family members. We know that Alzheimer's can be very isolating, both for the person who is affected and for the person that cares for them. So this is an opportunity for people to come by, have some fun, do some arts and crafts, laugh together, and just enjoy each other in a different kind of a way, one that isn't constrained by their memory loss. And so today, we had a therapy dog visit us, and we had, Heather Goodman came in and did some Valentine crafts, this being Valentine's Day. And so they asked if I could present you with some Valentines from our memory cafe.
Oh, thank you. As chairman, do I get the biggest Valentine? Can I have the biggest Valentine? And it's called Memory Loss?
Yeah, the full name...
Oh, yeah, go ahead, so everyone can hear it. And what time does it meet?
Full name is Connections Memory Cafe, meets the second Thursday of each month at 10 o'clock until noon. And slightly different things each time. This is grant funded by two grants, actually, one from the National Network of Libraries and Medicine, and one also a federal grant through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. We work in partnership with the community church, Village Church, and the Council on Aging. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Marilyn Mahoney, 179 Willow Road. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you. Two of my dear friends, Martha Taylor and Peggy Silva, did a painting with the group that you're referring to, painting class, and they were raving about how wonderful it was to work with people that have memory loss and how successful the whole day was for them and all of the elderly that were there. And I believe the paintings came out beautiful from what I saw.
Yes, last month.
So I just wanted to back her up.
Terrific, thank you. Sounds great, Sharon. Thank you. What I'd like to do is jump right down to number five. I'd like to get right onto the 2020 budget review. If you have something, go ahead.
Yeah, I just quickly, we received a letter about the sale of town property to Beth Kelly, and I got this letter from the neighbors. I don't know if you received that?
No, yeah.
Here's the letter they sent me, and they dropped it at the house.
Oh, yes, I did, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just, I just want to say, I think we should have town council review this.
Right.
Especially whereas the town meeting vote, and then request him to give us some answers on this. That's, that's all I want.
You can speak to that, right?
Yes, so, at the special town meeting in August, the town voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell this piece of land. And the process in town is for that to be reviewed by the Town Own Land Study Committee, which I'm a member of, and member of the Planning Board, there's a number of folks on the, on the committee. And so we've been reviewing the potential sale. And our responsibility is to put forth a recommendation to the board as to whether to sell it or not, and if to sell it, at what cost and in what form. In fee or easement, you know, different types of things can happen. We haven't come up with a recommendation yet, a recommendation has not been voted on. We are reviewing a number of different options. Abutters have come to all those meetings to voice, including, including those abutters. And so we hope to have a recommendation to the board in the coming month. Will the next meeting, the next meeting is gonna be, not next Wednesday, but the following, so I think that's the 21st.
Yeah, I'm sure he can let you know.
21st, at 5:30.
No, no, I'll leave that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Just a quick preface that Mr. Bartlett has been working on this for months, and each of us had a chance to sit with him separately and go over the budget. Correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
First of all, I want to apologize to, you know, all those that have been trying to get some time with me or get my attention on other issues, because this has been taking up a lot of my time. And so I've had to focus a lot on it, but it's, you know, obviously, it's an important part of the job. I also have to thank Debbie Waters, our accountant, for all of her help in preparing this and assisting me with putting these numbers together. It's been a ton of, it's, it's taken a lot of time and it's been a ton of work at this point, and we still have a lot to go. But I think that the board will be, is comfortable with, with what I've proposed. And tonight, I hope that you will vote to approve and send it to the FinCom to continue the process. I and many before me have spoken about the financial concerns of the town's budget. The former interim town administrator spoke about the need for an override. The 2015 Financial Operations Report from the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue identified the concern of the town's reliance on free cash. The Finance Committee Report of last year identified that the town needs to consider measures to control our expenditures and ways to increase revenue. I agree with all of those statements, and the Board of Selectmen a couple of weeks ago, or actually, more than that at this point, voted to, or gave me direction to develop two budgets, one with an override and one without. I have spoken about the need, myself, about the need to secure our bond rating. Without investing in stabilization and OPEB, we are jeopardizing our bond rating. And so future borrowings, you know, if our bond rating is not secured and drops, future borrowings will cost us more money. And given the fact that we have an aging infrastructure and, and known construction or, or work needed, it's important that we secure that bond rating so that we're not paying, you know, you know, one and a half or two times back what we borrow. We also have estimated about $600,000, which is 25% of the total cost to storm-related damages from last winter. FEMA will reimburse us 75% of that, but we have to pay 25% of it. Now, we did a short-term borrowing in order to, to pay for those storm damages, and we still have a lot of work to do, but we have to pay 600,000 of that. And again, and just to back up on stabilization and OPEB, OPEB is post-employment benefits, we're required to fund that account. And right now, we have $1 in it. We have not been, we have not been putting money into that account. And when I talk about the reliance on free cash, free cash, for, for those who are unaware of free cash, it's, it's not a confirmed amount of money that you're gonna receive each year. So financing the town based on an unconfirmed amount of money is, is not responsible. It's, we should be using free cash to buy one-time purchases, capital needs, putting the money away in stabilization. But the way that, you know, last year, this town, we, we balanced our budget with a million dollars of free cash and overlay surplus. So we have an expense problem, but we also have a revenue problem. We don't have new forms of revenue coming into the town. It's either we rezone for new growth, commercial business comes into town, or we do a general override. And on the expense side, we have to think about, you know, how we are paying for services, maybe restructuring some of the services that we have, utilizing grants, investing in energy efficiency to reduce the cost of, of utilities. So it's a balance, what we're trying to do is solve in two ways. Be tighter on our expenses, but also bring in some more revenue that is gonna help the town set us up for the future. Free, with, I meant, I talked about free cash a moment ago. Last year, we had about 240-ish thousand dollars more in free cash. So this year, we are, we are only at about $750,000 in free cash. Overlay surplus helped the rest of that, when I talked about a million earlier, but about $750,000 free cash. We estimate that that amount is gonna continue to decrease over the next two years. So we are heading towards a time that an override is needed. I believe now is the time to do so and not kick the can down the road and wait any longer. The $600,000 in storm damage that we owe, if we were to borrow for that instead of try to pay it down with an override, we're adding about $130,000 to the total cost of that, of that loan. So for a host of reasons, I've put together two budgets that I think can try to, can try to attack this issue from both angles. In both budgets, I've essentially level funded everything in the budget, except for some, except for some restructuring, some putting money towards stabilization in an override budget, but essentially, I've level funded, level funded our budget to help with, help with the expenditure side. In total, my no override budget that I'm presenting to you is .14% larger than last year's budget, .14%. My override budget, which, I'm sorry, I did do, I looked at, when I looked at the override, I thought, let me look at bill impact, and it's something that I spoke to you about a few weeks ago. A $600,000 override, bill impact on the average home, about $647,000 home, would be $433 in the year. This override that I'm talking about is a general override, it's not a debt exclusion. This would be something that would stay on our tax rate. And I believe we need that in order to sustain our, like I said, secure our bond rating, continue to be put, put money on into stabilization OPEB, and also become less reliant on free cash, which we know is decreasing. So I looked at a $600,000 override, a $700,000, an $800,000, and a million dollar override. Where I landed with this budget is a $600,000 override. With a $600,000 override and the other changes that I've made in our budget, that budget would be 1.64% more than last year's total budget. So it's still a very small increase. We are still being, so we're being, I'm trying to be as tight as we can on expenses as well. So it's not just take more money from the taxpayers in order to solve the problem. We're doing a little bit of, trying to do a little bit of both and not take a lot, you know? Just for reference, last year, the budget went 10, was a 10% increase from the year previous. So I'm talking, in an override budget, it's a 1.64% increase total. In a no override budget, it's a .14% increase. In my override budget, we would be paying about $400,000 down on the storm debt. Plus, we'll be putting money into stabilization, we'll be putting money into OPEB, we'll be putting money into civil defense, so folks that come, additional money into civil defense, so folks that help us out during emergency storm-related issues. I'm also gonna be looking to hire a consultant to come in and put in, to create financial policies for the town, something that we haven't had ever, I don't think, and something that I think is important, you know, if we're gonna be asking for the taxpayers to put more money up, that we're being responsible with that, with that money. A few, a few capital infrastructure needs, like de-letting in part of the police station. One of our fire trucks needs a new pump, upgrading IT, upgrading our public access Also included that is, is the schools, the schools are level funded in this budget, which ultimately would, would result in a cut because of their contractual obligations. So in override, they would get that additional funding that they need, and those additional costs for them is really because of the tuition costs that they, that went up from out-of-town And also, and also we have, so, I'm sorry, we, so paying off most of the storm debt, putting money into stabilization, OPEB, civil defense, the schools, some capital needs, and some borrowing. And so one other thing I'll mention in here is that in my no override budget, salary-related items have a 1% increase, which equals about $30,000 total. In the override budget, it's a 2% increase, so another $30,000. This override is not about salaries, it's not about, it's, it really is not about salaries. That's a footnote in what this override is gonna be able to provide, but I think it's important to be upfront about those differences. But I also want to say that, you know, the folks who work for this town took a 1%, one year deal last year, and the cost of living went up 2 and 1/4 this year and went up 2% last year. So it's a modest increase, I think it's the right thing to do. But again, I want, I can't stress enough that it's a footnote in what this $600,000 is going to. The keys here is paying off most of the storm debt, putting money into stabilization and OPEB, couple extra infrastructure needs that, that I believe we need, and stabilizing our... and stabilizing our, our budget so that we're prepared to be less reliant on free cash that we know is no longer gonna be there in the future.
Can I just ask you one question?
Yes.
Where says debt. Are those previous debts that we're paying off with it?
Um, no, those three.
Public access.
No, so actually.
Exact capital.
That would be borrowings that we could do this year. But if we don't get the override, we're not gonna borrow for them. You know, pub, public access TV, the public access equipment, in my, in my opinion, is something that I hear a lot about that, you know, folks out there right now probably can't fully hear me. And it's something that we really need to improve. But given the financial situation of the town, I don't wanna borrow for that unless we have an override, and I think that we can afford it. The other thing on there is fire tools and motorcycle for the police.
Why do we need a motorcycle?
I actually spoke to the chief of police. The current motorcycle that we have is at a point where the trade-in value now, it would be best to, you know, general maintenance would be best to trade it in now. Financially, it makes the most sense. However, given the circumstance of the town, we're taking that, we're actually, I haven't had a chance to update that. We're taking that off the list regardless of the override.
I mean, I think, I think you need to look at, is it, is it a need or a want? I, I don't believe we need a motorcycle, so.
Well, like I said, that's why it's not included in the no-override. I had it in the override. But even still, speaking to the chief, we're gonna, we're gonna take it off the table this year regardless.
Okay.
It is, you know, it's a balance of.
What do you mean, you're gonna take it out? We're gonna still have a motorcycle.
We have a motorcycle now. Right now would be the best time to trade it in and get a new one because of the value that it has currently. Versus a year or two down the road, we're not gonna get much more for that motorcycle when we go to trade it in. However, it's a tough decision to make. Proper management says do it now financially. But given the total, you know, the big picture, we're gonna try and stretch it out and, and see what we can do in the future.
It's been very, very useful, very productive too as well, especially with what's coming across that causeway.
I'll, I'll say that, you know, I think that the, the department heads in this town are on board and understand the financial situation that we're handling, that we're seeing, and have tried to really take, you know, things that unless they're absolutely necessary, things that we use every single day, to kind of push those to an override or next year. Or find alternative sources of funding in order to pay for it. You know, the fire station, the fire, the fire department received a grant for a brand-new fire truck that we'll be receiving next month. The Harbor Master boat sunk. It needs to be replaced. We were able to work out a deal with Lynn Fire, and we're getting a, an unbelievable deal there, something that would've cost the town upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna replace that for free with a, almost a brand-new boat.
That's excellent.
The library has a terrace, the terrace in the library is essentially, you can't walk on it, it's in disrepair. They just received a seventy thousand dollar grant from Historical Commission to help repair that. The school, you know, the school and the police worked together to get a grant for upgrading the cameras for security in the school. The Green Communities and the MVP Committee are, the, the Green Community, the Green Communities Committee is going to put us on a five-year plan for a twenty percent energy reduction. And that's the second biggest expense of the town is our utilities. So it's gonna take some time, but that's gonna produce massive savings for the town. And the MVP program is gonna potentially make us eligible for significant funding to help improve our infrastructure and the way that we handle up, you know, future storms. So that's major monies down the road. Uh, we're looking at a community compact grant for a regional approach regarding a human resources department. Now, I know regionalization is a scary conversation, but we don't have a human resources department in this town. And that's something that we desperately need in today's day. So by getting a grant from the, from the governor's office potentially and utilizing a human resources department in a neighboring town that's already established and adding us as a branch of that and getting some of those services, expert-trained services at a discounted cost to the town, I mean, could save us a ton of money. So the, the point I'm, I'm making, and those are, that's just, that stuff has happened since I've been here in the last six months. So the, you know, the, we're changing our perspective as to how to accomplish the wants or the needs, you know, outside of just, you know, coming for reserve fund transfers or trying to dip into the general fund. We're looking at outside funding sources. And this budget is a level-funded budget. I can't, I don't know, you know, the last time that the proposed Board of Selectmen budget was less than two percent. Uh, so it's a very slim budget. We are definitely taking the expenses side of this issue seriously. But we're also asking for an override to help with our revenue issue. You know, it's been, it's, it's never easy to ask for more money from the taxpayers of the town. However, it's been a long time and of, of very low tax rate in this town. And so a six hundred thousand, I feel the lowest possible ask that we can go that is gonna set us up properly for the future.
One, another question? Is there any consideration for the Coast Guard housing in here? Are we gonna pay any of the debt down, I mean, the principal down? I know we're paying interest, I don't see it anywhere in the budget. With that override, are we gonna pay any of that principal down? We owe one point eight million dollars on it. We still don't have a date, what we're gonna put on the warrant. And I'd like to set that tonight, that we absolutely pin them down to, to have it on this year's warrant to see what we're gonna do with them. And I wanna know, we owe one point eight million dollars on it. We're paying down, we're paying probably thirty, thirty-some-odd thousand dollars a year in interest alone. And we've been doing that for a while now. And we're balancing the budget with it. I wanna know, are we gonna pay any of the principal down? Even if it's a hundred bucks? I mean, I, I'd like to know that. I don't see it anywhere in the budget.
This current budget does not put any money towards principal of that loan. Um, I will say that we have, as of the end of FY eighteen, we had seven million twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars in outstanding debt. And I know we did a four million dollar borrowing plus the short-term loan for the FEMA in the last fiscal year. So that has gone up. Uh, when, you know, similar, think about it like when you're paying your, your own loans, you're gonna try to pay down the ones with the highest interest rates first. We have a great deal currently with the military housing loan, that it's a very low, low-interest rate. And we hope that the committee presents a solution that will, you know, be financially, but also, you know, stick with the character of, of the town, something. That's gonna, that's gonna go to town floor. That's gonna be a, a question of the town of what, of what they wanna do with that. Um, but there's a chance that it turns into a, you know, that that gets paid down in the coming years. So given the fact that the interest rate is lower than others, it's not included in this budget. But especially, that might, you know, that might get soul, I don't know what's gonna happen there. So it wasn't a priority paying that down in this, in this year's budget, given the fact it's a pretty good interest rate and we don't have to pay any of the principal down for the next five years. And it sounds like we're gonna maybe have some progress on in the coming months.
Okay, that's all I have. They had, they had mentioned, they came up last meeting in Peter Barber for, for the Coast Guard housing and had mentioned they wanted something done in late February or March. And we talked about, you and I talked about, you know, if we have to open the warrant to get something on there, we'll do it.
It, it has to be put on there.
Understood, but, you know, we can't keep kicking this Coast Guard housing can down the street. You just can't.
Um, and you know, one thing I haven't mentioned yet is looking at our existing services and things that we have and restructuring of those and how can we continue to provide services at maybe a, a lower cost to the town. One things that, one thing that's in this budget that I've added regardless of override is a restructuring of the, the chief of fires position at the fire department. Now, in the past, the town has gone through many different structures. We've had dual chief, you know, a superintendent and a chief. We've had a working chief. Um, we've had part-time, I believe, and we've had full-time most recently. Uh, my, the budget that I have put together reduces that salary rate to essentially turn it into either a part-time, a working, a dual role. There's different ways we can go. Um, but that is a change from previous, uh, from previous years.
And, and back on that, Coast Guard housing, not to correct you, but it's one point eight-six million that we owe. And it's thirty thousand, you're right on it. Thirty thousand dollars a year in interest.
So I was off by a hundred and forty thousand, sorry.
Just, you know, I have to sleep with that, you know? One thing the town needs to do is to be on top of this so that you can come up and voice your opinion at town meeting because it's up to the town meeting. And you're absolutely right on that.
Well, it's been three years with seven million dollars borrowing. We borrowed way too much money.
It's been a lot of years.
Right. So it's gotta get done. I would, I would make a motion that we absolutely put them.
I think we wait and see what they propose. Knowing that we can open up the warrant and put something in, I don't want them coming and having a disaster on the town hall floor because they're not ready.
Okay, no, I understand.
But we'll keep that. We can have a special meeting and just throw it in as Article thirty-one or something. But if, if they are ready.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just think Enzo's right. We, we should give them a date sequence leading up to town meeting. I mean, they wanna have a public hearing. I mean, they should have that within February and March. And then a date and have a final, final, we should give them, you know, direction so they put something, their recommendation in the town law. And we should leave that, you know, open. And we should, we need that so we can get, you know, get the townspeople ready exactly what they're gonna recommend. Because it's, I mean, I, I wouldn't wait for, this has been going on for a long time. And I, I just think they've had a few years to study all this. You know, I think it's just a time, we need to give them a time to. I, I, Enzo's right.
Oh, I don't think so.
You don't think we should give them a time to?
No, you guys, you guys can vote it in. I'm, I'm not gonna sit here as a selectman and have them say, oh, we weren't ready. And then, oh, let's give them a date that they should come back to us. I'd be with that. And say, then at that date, we say, hey, look.
That's fine with me, that's fine.
Two more meetings, another month max?
I'll just, if I might, um, we essentially, the warrant needs to be finalized by the end of March because of the printing and the books that have to go out. So if you're, if you're gonna ask them to come before you so you can make a decision on whether or not to include them in the warrant, make, just be it before the end of March.
But that's what I was saying, around the fourteenth of March.
That's fine, that's two weeks, two, three weeks.
Put it in the articles for the warrant?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. We have till the end of March, you just said. But, yes, but I caution both of you that they, they may be not ready.
I know, well, I mean, we can, we can hope for the best.
We can press, we can not pressure them, but we can ask them.
I'm gonna move that we open the warrant tonight because I've got an article to be put in there. We need to straighten out.
Okay, after the budget, we'll do that.
Yeah, no, just, just one article.
Yeah. Okay, um, we've gone over this. Do you wanna go over this for the public or do you, or?
Um, I mean, the, the total, so in no-override budget, the total number is twelve million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and forty-eight dollars. The override budget is thirteen million sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. And I'll just remind, remind you that last year's budget was twelve million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. So a no-override budget, again, is a point one-four percent increase from last year's budget. And an override is a one point six-four percent increase. And that override is gonna get us paying off most of the storm debt, putting money into stabilization, a hundred thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars into OPEB. The schools are gonna be funded to the, to where they need to be. A few necessary, um, capital projects, financial policies. And set us up, you know, by doing all those things, by the stabilization OPEB, that's gonna secure our bond rating so that we are, we can withstand, you know, for borrowing in the future.
Has, has everybody seen this? Every department has seen this?
Uh, no, we've, we've gone through, I've gone through each department with each other, but seen the entire budget, not yet. And, you know, I hope to discuss this more throughout the process and, um, put together, you know, some sort of presentation so that folks can understand it more. And, and I'm happy to, uh, you know, I've been thinking of, maybe having some, uh, meetings outside of Board of Selectment meetings where folks can come up and ask questions about, you know, what's included in the budget and, and what's it for and things of that nature.
Questions, gentlemen?
Well, I wanna make sure that you got in the budget like, like the, um, behind the fire station, the tennis court and the basketball court, that's a, that's a disgrace. It's, um, the fencing, that, that has to be repaired.
I.
Got money in that? Have you got money for that?
I don't have money in this for that. But what I did do is I, I submitted a number of applications to the Community Preservation Committee for CPC funding. Uh, that falls under recreation, so it's ineligible criteria. Included in those applications were the tennis and basketball court of Flash Road, the half-court basketball court at the Johnson School, the Little Nahat Playground, beach access at Tudor, the removable stairs.
Okay.
A number of different dredging, uh, the women's softball field, a new backstop, um, and scoreboard. You know, there are little things there that, uh, the town desperately needs but tend to fall off the table when you have such major other priorities.
We're at fault. We haven't stayed up with the maintenance of what we have, especially in the recreation area for the kids.
Well, yeah, and, but unfortunately, we've been faced with, the townsman faced with tough decisions and, you know.
This was great, hopefully get you back on course. Get us back on course.
Well, I, I suggest, Mr. Chairman, we vote on this budget now so that he, then he can explain which budget, you know, we're gonna recommend and go with, with him. You know what I'm saying?
What we vote on tonight, I want to make sure gets to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
There's a motion, you have a motion under tab five.
Reason that last year was a disaster for them and for us.
Yep, it was late.
That, yeah, we had three administrators.
Right.
But this year, I mean, this will be very good with.
If we vote it in tonight, we can give it to them.
Instead of the thirty-first of January, it's, it's Valentine's Day. That's, you know, that's doable, that's doable.
Certainly hope, certainly hope to improve upon that next year. Um, this is, you know, my first budget for the town and, uh, came in, in August. So, um, you know, we, I hope to be able to submit that to them sooner next year and start this process earlier. And I know that there is a desire on their behalf to potentially include something in the warrant that would move the town meeting to a date in May, um, one month later, where not only will that give us more time to prepare it, but they will also, we, the town, will also have more information about funding sources from the, from. also have more information about funding sources from the, from the state at that time. Right now, we're kind of a little bit operating blind. We have estimates that are, that tend to become true, but it'd be nice to have a little bit more time.
Would you say something?
No, I would just like to commend you, Tony. Being only here six months, you've gone through a lot and all the various grants that you've touched and, and, and got approved for us is very much appreciated. I know you don't like to blow your horn, but I will. You've done an excellent job getting the budget. It's a very difficult year with a northeastern problem and there's a lot to this thing. You come in at a tough time, but you're handling it very, very well and you're doing an excellent job. I'd just like to put, say that.
And are we going to make a mo, are we going to motion to set both, send both budgets to the FinCon? Override and no override?
There's a motion in your books under tab number five.
Okay.
But, but it would be submitting both of these budgets to A and F.
And let them decipher it. Let them.
Well, the idea here would be that at town meeting, there'd be two budgets presented. One of them would be contingent upon the result of an override vote.
But the Finance Committee very met with the town administrator and had advised him that they're not in favor of any override whatsoever and they want personnel cuts to balance the budget. Am I correct? So I'm not, I'm not, you know.
This is the selectmen's budget that we send to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
That's correct.
And they make recommendations to the town meeting, recommendations on our budget.
That's correct.
And as far as I'm concerned, this is the budget.
Looking further, looking
In the course, if I may, in the course of one of my jobs, I work for the Department of Revenue Local Services and I keep in contact with some of them and they keep, keep saying, and I'm sure they've said it to you, Mr. Baller, when are you going to stop kicking the can down the road? I'm sure they've said that to you because they said it to me.
Mm-hmm.
And I was like, oh, I'm a selectman, I got to listen. But it's the truth. This is, you've done an outstanding job here and I'm, I'm very proud of you that we finally put the brakes on and we need some help from the town to get this through. So I say we push this exactly as it is to the Advisory and Finance Committee. I'll, I'll accept the motion.
Both budgets?
Both budgets, because this is how it is.
Okay, if both budgets are going, because I still like to go over it, that's fine. I'll make a motion.
I move, I'm
Richie.
Okay.
I move the Board of Select vote to endorse the town administrator and the selectmen budget for fiscal year 2020 and to forward it to the Finance and Advisory Committee for their ongoing review in the fiscal year 2020 budget development and process. I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. The discussion?
Discussion.
As long as both budgets are going, I'm okay with it.
It's as written, of course, it's going. That's how I look at it. Okay, through the discussion.
Wait a minute, I want to make sure I understand this. Why wouldn't we just send them one budget? I don't know why we sent them two.
Because the override is a ballot question that actually happens the same day as town meeting as well as motions on the floor. So you have to, because we have to have a balanced budget, you have to submit two budgets, one with and one without.
In their Finance Committee book that gets mailed to the taxpayer, I want to make sure that both budgets are in there so that they, people read this, not just their recommendation and their budget. They should put the selectmen's budget in that Finance Committee book too. One column, their recommend, their, our budget, their recommendation, and then the override budget so we can, you know, especially if they're voting already against it, the override to begin with. I don't, you know, not even giving us a chance out of the box.
Yeah, well, it goes, I think it should go as this. It's our budget.
You know, which we recommend, are we recommending the balance? The budget and the override budget?
You have the town vote on both.
Right.
And then if the override gets defeated, we go back to the other one.
Yeah, but is the, the town selectmen, are they voting for the override? We're going to vote for the override tonight so we can set the date sequence for that?
No, we already, well, we've already voted to, to do it, but we haven't set the date yet.
And we, are we approving the override tonight? The Board of Select?
Oh, I thought we are, yes, okay.
Well, so what you've done to this point is you've voiced support and direction to me to create a budget with two columns, one for an override, one without. Uh, so the process now is to send that document to the Advisory Committee so they can continue their process and put their recommendations together. At the next Board of Select meeting, I don't have the updated warrant quite yet, but when we open the warrant, you'll actually make a motion, voting to put the override on the ballot. So that's another step in the procedure.
Right.
Um, you've already, I mean, you guys have voiced support for it.
Do you need approval from the Board of Select tonight on the override budget?
No, you just, I just need you to bless this document so we can send it to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
And we left the actual meeting time for the, for the referendum to be in June, but we haven't finalized with the vote yet. That's where it was left, Richie. You had mentioned March and it's way too early.
Well, it's going to be a referendum vote.
Referendum vote.
So, but we won't finish the annual meeting on the budget there. We don't have an answer for the override.
Well, let the FinCon work on this.
Well, they already voted not.
Essentially.
They said no to the override already.
And they haven't, I don't think they
They haven't, they have not voted on it. They've expressed concern about an override and, and have expressed concern about our expenditures where it's an ongoing process, you know. But I'll just, to clarify, Richie, at town meeting, my understanding at town meeting, what we will do is we will approve a budget. That budget will be balanced without an override and it will have contingencies if the override passes that it would increase certain line items and continue to be balanced. So at town meeting, you'll actually be, in theory, you'll be approving both and the result of the vote, if it, if they get approved, would, would kick in which number from which budget.
This is only a suggestion. We can open the town meeting in April and postpone it to June and then have the override question somewhere in March, April, May, somewhere in there. So when we go back in June at the annual town meeting, we'll have the numbers for July 1st.
That's a good idea. Not a bad idea.
Well, let's think about that.
Yeah, yeah, we got time.
I never even thought of that.
Yeah.
There's certain
We don't, I mean, we just postponed it because they know it's an override. So then the people in
Election Day on the 30th or whatever day that is could be referendum day too.
Yes.
Wow, your brain's really on today.
Wow.
That's very good.
After a few decades.
Nice. I like that.
That's doable.
So we're going to send them both?
But let's send this as it is to the FinCon tonight or whatever. Vote on that.
Let them work on it.
Yep.
I'll call the vote.
All those in favor of sending it as is?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Nice job, Tony.
I, without the staff, without the department heads, without our accountant and our team, I wouldn't be where I'm at right now with this budget. So I have to, I have to mention, you know, Debbie Waters and the chief, and each department head for working with me, preparing this budget.
I do have questions though, still, needs and wants, just remember that. But luckily they're yours.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we open the warrant and for the so, the reason why we open the warrant is to, um, to make sure we have, I sent this question to our legal counsel on the, Enzo, what was, what was the question we had?
Oh, the land?
Not, not on the land, you know. Yeah, we need that answered, but there was another thing we wanted to answer ahead of the town council. That was the article for, um.
I just praised you, Mr. Lombard.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, it's, I forget where, what the, what was it? The, what were we going to bring up? The, not the land, sale of the land, but the other article that we wanted to put in the warrant. We had, we need legal
Oh, for the
Town Council review it is
Coast Guard housing? Maybe?
Well, that was one of them, but
Throw some ideas out there.
No, but the other one was, I can't remember.
Well, let's do that next meeting.
Well, we, it's, it's something to do with, I forget what it was. Something that, I forgot, I just completely, I was on the, on the budget, my mind is, I completely forgot, I should have wrote, women, I could have wrote that. The I wrote it down somewhere. God.
Can, can
Enzo, you reminded me of it. Okay, I'll, I'll think of it. I'll just, we'll put it on next week.
Let's go, let's go to new business. For the next meeting, let's think about what you said as far as April postponing the town meeting but having the election and the referendum that day. Okay?
Well, we got to get with the town moderator, you know.
Yeah. Tony, Tony, you can talk to the town moderator, et cetera.
Well, just, we, the town meeting currently in our charter states it has to be the last day of April. So for this year, we have to do that. If we wanted to, but I think you can postpone, once you go into it, you can postpone to a later date, but, you know, maybe I can have legal counsel here or the moderator here for the next meeting so that we can have a discussion about it.
Okay, good, thank you. New business? Approve Nahant Cultural Council Forty Steps Dance.
Okay.
Three A.
I move the Board of Select vote to approve the Forty Steps Dance hosted by the Nahant Cultural Council from March 29th and 30th at Town Hall.
I was supposed to read that and
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
I'll second, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Approve Big Ryan Storyteller for Children's Event hosted by the Nahant Public Library hosted at Town Hall.
I move, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Select vote to approve the Big Ryan Storyteller for Children event hosted by the Nahant Public Library on the 20th, on February 20th at Town Hall. That must be the vacation week? Yes, yeah.
Librarian said yes.
Yes, so moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Town Administrator report? We've done enough talking, right?
Yeah, I think so. I got a couple things.
Oh, closing announcements?
I have a couple things for us.
Is that right?
Yeah, do, do it in, um, closing announcements.
You're going to close, you're going to close me out, huh?
No. Okay. I just want to let everybody know that I, I had put out there, oh, okay, Richie, I'll let you go.
I want to revise the article for the warrant. We, we've got to add, open up the warrant on the, the wetlands. Remember that article?
Bylaw?
Bylaw?
Yeah.
We want to reverse that in the April town meeting, the next warrant.
It's on there, isn't it?
It's on there, right?
Oh, it's on there? I didn't see that.
Yep.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I guess, I don't know.
That's what it was, that was sorry, it's on there.
Okay, all right, good, I, I wasn't sure.
That's why, that's why we're having the meeting at the country club because the last time we, the wetlands bylaw came up, it was extremely crammed in here, probably overcapacity, and we weren't able to have an efficient, you know, process, or we heard a lot of complaints about the process being inefficient because of how many people were here. So given that that is on the warrant, I have to prepare for a repeat of the number of people. So that's why we're going to be hosting it at the country club.
That, 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 that article needs to be reversed because Northeastern went right by it, didn't even affect Northeastern. And we've got enough zoning in the state and the town level to prevent them from expanding. So we really don't need this. This article affects about 200 people living, especially we moved that floodplain. So it would affect them tremendously if something, you know, they need, we need to reverse that, take that out because if we have a storm and they've got to go get a new seawall or something, it's a, it's quite the process. And we've got the safeguards already in with our current zoning bylaws and on state level and local level for Northeastern. So it, it just, it's a kind of a mute point, but it's, it's affecting those 250 people living along that shoreline, which we, you know, we don't want to punish them. And that's what we're doing with that, that article.
That as the speech for the town meeting?
No, no, I understand, but I just, I, I wasn't sure it was in there. Okay, that's good, I'm, you know, listen.
Nope, nope, this is good.
I'm getting old and I missed a few meetings, I'm, I'm sorry, I
Tonight I put my glasses down.
Yeah.
I was home alone.
Yes.
And I couldn't find them. I got here at 10:07, so you're not alone.
No, I've got my, I can find my watch, but I wrote it down somewhere, I just want to remember, no, no, I understand. Gee, thank you. But I am getting, you know, we're getting up there, so.
Enzo?
I want to, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The fire chief, he's here, the chief, you want to say a few words or something?
Can I just, uh?
No?
Give me five minutes?
Sure, yep.
Okay, so, uh, so you know that we don't have an open space committee? And I've been after this for a while. We need to have, we need to have an updated open space plan for many different reasons. It allows us grant monies and it's just a state requirement. So I put it out there and I get, I have Margaret Alexander and I would move that we accept Margaret Alexander, Diana Brandy, Dana Sheehan, and I have actually a couple more that are coming through that want to be on this committee. I will schedule a meeting next week with them to give them their shots so they know what to, what to do, how to, how to do it, you know, even though I could probably take a lesson there myself. But I think Diana Brandy can remedy that because she was on the previous committee. But it's a start. So we have three people that are going to, that actually have committed to it. I have, and I have a couple more that want to be on it.
How many people do you need, I mean, to be on?
I think five.
Five?
Six doesn't matter, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a good thing. I mean, I have the old open space plan that Linda Pivacek and them did, it's very, it's comprehensive, but it, it allows us to, you know, identify open space, the, what kind of plants they have, it really entails an awful lot.
Well, T and I, can we submit a candidate or something, you know?
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'll find out, I, I just
If you have anybody, yeah, absolutely.
For the open space committee, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Absolutely. I mean, I, this is just something I've been doing, so I would recommend that we get them
With this, with this
And if you can find a couple of people, absolutely.
No, no, no.
We need people, definitely. It's hard to find volunteers.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a lot of work and I understand that and the last committee that did it did an outstanding job. And I, I, we just need to get that rolling again.
Just to, you know, I hate to be the process legal person, but if this is, I believe the old committee was moderator appointed, so I just want to read that. And if this is a new committee though, it may not matter, but I would just want to
It's open space and recreation. We can put them, we can give Dave, I think it is Dave. So give him those names and let him send out a letter. I'm sure he'll go along with it, we need it, okay? The other thing I wanted to, so we'll get that rolling. The other thing I want to get going is the
Should we vote on that?
Uh, I don't think we, if it's, if it's appointed by the moderator, which I think it could be.
Okay, you'll be in touch with
We, we need to get a hold of Dave Conlon to let him do it.
I will.
I will.
Um...
Yeah, Tony do it.
Solarize. So I went to a solarization meeting, uh, over at Swampscot, uh, Monday, with, uh, Ellen Goldberg and Nicole, um, Gogan, two, uh, great ladies that have volunteered in the town in Nahant, and I want to appoint that committee, I want to have a solarized committee appointed in town by us. Uh, there's two people there, they have a couple more, I think, that they can come up with. Uh, essentially, um, we'll get a grant for this, and, um, and, and I was, I was new to it, so I went over there and sat with them. It's, we'll be working with, uh, the town will work with, uh, the M.A.S.C.E.C., Nahant, Salem, Swampscot, as a collaborative, um, to select a, uh, a solar provider. I think that will let people know that the town backs this provider, and they don't have to fear getting bamboozled by any, any one of these companies. And we'll, I think it'll probably give us, uh, buying power, give the customer a buying power also. Um, we're gonna get a, we'll get a grant for this, um, each, each community will, we'll be working with Salem and Swampscot. Um, there's huge benefits for solar. I mean, we're moving forward, I think the town is moving forward with the MVP, Green Communities, the Solar, Solarize Committee, um, and we're gonna cut our energy solutions in half, I would, I would assume, at some point. So, this is all good stuff, you know, community rating system, this is all good stuff. So, I would ask that we appoint Ellen Goldberg and Nicole, uh, Gogan, and we'll have some more appointments later to work on this committee, is that...
Is this a, this is a brand-new committee, right?
Yeah.
So we, we have to vote in the committee?
Yeah.
And then you, and then the point, though...
I'll make the, I'll, I'll make the motion to start this committee and give them some, some buying power, give them some powers to, to, to...
I'll, I'll second your motion.
Okay, further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then I, I move we appoint who the two in the...
Uh, it's Ellen Goldberg.
Right.
She's actually on the Green Communities, and Nicole, uh, Gogan, who's on the Green Communities, and so...
I, I second that, move the appointment to those.
Okay, very good. So we'll send out letters to them. Absolutely.
I, I can put together, I can put together a, oh, continue, sorry, continue.
No, no, go ahead.
I can put together a, um, committee description, you know, how many members, what the term is, what the responsibility of the committee is, uh, and provide that for you guys for the next Board of Selectment meeting as well. And I, and I'll just say that the solarized program is extremely successful across the state.
Yes.
And most of the time, it's one community taking advantage of that program, and, and it's a residential pro, it's actually for the residents. So folks who want, people who live in town that want to invest in solar on their properties, they can now, now they're going to, getting a better price, because this one provider, you know, is, is offering this to the entire town, plus it's a trusted, um, provider based on the review from the Clean Energy, the M.A.S.C.E.C. Uh, so, the fact that we're going into it with two other communities is even, you, you know, prevent, uh, potential for even more cost savings to the residents to invest in solar. So it's, it's, it's a great program, and, you know, I'm excited that, you know, folks from town are getting involved in it.
Good. There we go. I'll still show that, you know, we'll be working with GIS maps to show the different areas of town that have solar. I mean, it'll get people to understand GIS better to also, and there's a lot of benefits to this whole thing, so it's a great, great deal. That's it, that's all I got.
That was ten minutes.
Um, and when I went to this meeting, it was efforts to get Charlie Baker to consider solar panels, and they weren't successful.
On his house?
Yeah.
So... Big yes.
Okay, on, on closing announcements, um, we all received this from Keep Nahant Wild. I thought it was well done, um, and I, I talked with Diane Monti...
Mm-hmm.
Um, for about ten seconds, just to tell her it was well done. And what Bill had brought up before, I wanted to save till the end, I'm glad you stayed. The East Point, in fact, the proposed development is prohibited by Nahant's existing zoning bylaws. East Point is zoned NR for Nahant resource. And this information was sent to me before and I stored it, because, um, I've approached this a different way, and, um, that's how I am as a selectman. But, property zoned NR cannot be developed for any other purpose. To stop NU, we all, all we have to do is enforce our bylaws. So I think that this natural resource bylaw and all other bylaws, that the Board of Selectmen should be sending to the Conservation Commission, the ZBA, the Planning Board, and the Building Inspector, because it's their purview. I think they should come up with an answer to this, so that we can know the answer. I, I think we deserve to know the answer to this. Because there is a map, I've seen the map that was sent to me about NR, and, and, and if our zoning bylaws stand up, uh, well, I want to know that, as chairman.
Um, you know...
I think that this should be looked at by the people who are responsible for the zoning.
Sure. Uh, I want to, you know, there's certainly some confusion amount, around, around town about, um, how this bylaw, it seems like there's some confusion, given that there's like, almost pressure being put on the board to enforce the bylaw.
But it's not...
Just to be, to, to be clear, the bylaw is only gonna be enforced when there's something to enforce it upon. There is no building permit in front of the Building Inspector, there's no application submitted to the town at this point. So, without an application, it's really hard for the Building Inspector, the Concom, the ZBA, the Planning Board, the folks that would have a role in that process, to really articulate whether or not, um, parts of that project or that application does or doesn't, um, affect that bylaw. So, they can explain what the bylaw is, but until an application is in front of them, they really can't say, you know, whether it, um, does or does not have, you know, whether the bylaw has any effect on that said application. And, you know, I would just say that it's a, that process is, it's a legal process, it's unbiased, they, they are char, they're responsible to uphold, you know, the letter of the law that's written in our town bylaws and our zoning laws, and, you know, once that application goes to them, they will, you know, if they have, you know, legal ground to deny an application, or if they don't, then they don't. So, you know, I just want to make it clear, for, so folks understand, that the Board of Selectmen, myself, we don't have a role in that process. And at the ti, at the moment, neither does the inspector or those committees, because there is no application in front of them at this time.
Have they, have, have they even, have you heard, are they sending a application forward yet, or?
No, um, actually, the Northeastern has expressed, uh, that they hope to submit an application in the near future. They have not told me, or us, uh, what's gonna be included in that.
Right.
And they've also said that they hope to send a draft document of community contributions that would be included if they were to submit some type of application in the future. I haven't received anything, I don't know what, what, what's on it, but that, that news, you know, came in this week.
Okay, but when we receive that, that we, we make that public that same day?
I would...
Right.
Absolutely. I think that, you know, the board has been very clear about not negotiating, or when we negotiate, or things of that nature, and being transparent. If something comes across my desk that is even in any type, you know, uh, in any form of a negotiation document, I'll bring that right to the board, and I would, I would recommend that it is made public, so that, um, you know, the community knows what's in front of us.
Okay, good.
And if I hear of, uh, you know, I've asked the Building Inspector to let me know if he receives any application, same thing, would put that out right away.
But couldn't, could, couldn't these boards get ready? Shouldn't they know all this information? I mean, just get ready, in case they file, so you'll be all set. Have a few meetings to discuss it, and, I mean, I was sent information that the townspeople got like that, so I mean...
It's, you know, it's all dependent, there's so many...
Okay.
Different, you know, until you actually have the project in front of you, it's hard to make a determination. I mean, obviously, you can have a, you can talk about what the bylaw states, and, and, you know, things of that nature, but, you know, it's hard to put any comment out there until you actually have a proposal in front of you.
Okay, but it's still something I'll, I'll pursue, I, I think we should pursue.
Did it offer any further comment on these?
We've already had it, go ahead.
So, uh, I'm Josh Antrim, two sixty-seven Hot Road. So, I've looked at the, the zoning map, all of East Point is in the natural resource area, and I've read the zoning laws several times, and there's no interpretation required. It says, you can't build there except for recreational buildings, period. So, if you haven't read that, I, I think you should, and I think you'd agree with me that there's no room for interpretation, there's no wiggle room, uh, you know, about that, it's black and white. Now, there is an opportunity for Northeastern to circumvent Nahant's zoning bylaws via the Dover Amendment, but Nahant's zoning bylaws are perfectly clear, black and white. And I, I agree with you, T, that, that we should prepare, right? You know, we, there's no sense waiting for someone to file a permit when they've already said we want to file a permit. Why don't we prepare and have a position as a town, this is our interpretation of Nahant's zoning bylaws and what is allowed via the Dover Amendment? It's about getting prepared. So, um, I would support the notion of getting the Planning Board prepared, the Building Inspector prepared, and so on, so that's all I had to say. Thanks.
If I may, um, legal counsel is in the process, town legal counsel is in the process of reviewing our, our town bylaws, and because, you know, the Keep Nahant Wild and, uh, other folks in town have approached us with that issue, so they are reviewing it. Um, I guess, let me just back up and clarify, there's nothing, you know, what, what we've heard is enforce the bylaw, there's nothing to enforce yet, because there's nothing to enforce it upon. I, I actually agree with, um, Mr. Antrim on what he said, certainly, our legal counsel is reviewing it, um, but, you know, the inspector, or the Concom, or the Planning Board, or the ZBA, is not gonna make a determination on that before an application were to be submitted, because it's, there is a process that they have to go through.
Understood, but prepared kind of fits with me, too, Josh. Um, but I agree, as long as legal counsel's there, that's good.
Can I have permission to speak for a minute? Marilyn Mahoney, one seventy-nine Willow. Um, I agree with you, T. I think that we have to be proactive as a community and get ourselves prepared. Um, at the last meeting that was held here at the Town Hall, Northeastern gave us three different renderings. Definitely, they're gonna probably land on one of those, and so we're not totally in the dark here, we know it's coming, and we know one of those is going to be probably the plan that they're hoping to accomplish in our community. Um, so I commend you for that recommendation. I think we should be proactive as a community and get ready, because I think if they succeed in, um, getting this, uh, some kind of a plan for implemented in our community, it's gonna permanently alter our community for generations to come. So I'm all for being proactive, intelligent, getting our act together, and getting ready, 'cause they are coming.
I just want to reiterate that I, I agree. We do have legal counsel preparing for it. All I'm saying is that the inspector and those committees cannot make a determination before going through a process.
Right.
That's all, that's all I'm saying, but we are, and I agree, uh, given the, you know, the, the natural resource zoning and the comments that, um, you're hearing from the residents, absolutely, our legal counsel is already reviewing our bylaws and preparing for that.
Good. We have, we have, um, I mean, the Planning Board has a couple lawyers on it, I, I think that they're land, one's a land use lawyer, I believe, um, I think that we have, uh, the Concom, we have a wetland scientist on it, um, plus a lawyer, um, and the, uh, Building Inspector knows his job. I don't, I mean, I think they're, they're gonna prepare for it, they should be, they, I think Wayne knows the law, uh, pretty well, and I think he'd be working with town council, I would lead council with this, and we'll, we'll do everything legally, legally possible. I mean, that's just the way it has to be. I don't, I don't see that as being a problem.
Closing announcements, Mr. Lombard? I'll say.
I'll say.
Nope. Mr. Barrow?
Uh, my closing announcement is kind of cut and dry. I will not be seeking reelection. We are adjourned.
Those move to adjourn?
I'll turn to move. I'll second.
We are adjourned, unanimous vote.